Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Alejandra Barasa, President of the Highscope Educational Research Foundation. We want to welcome you to our fifth roundtable, Politics of Teaching, which is part of the Segregation by Experience, Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades. And it is our, like I mentioned, our fifth roundtable. You can purchase the book with, by the authors Jennifer Kizadair and Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki Colgrove in our website, in our highscope.org store. It is an honor to introduce our moderator, Nena Odom, who is a doctoral candidate in the area of early childhood education in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Texas at Austin. She is a member of the Agency and Young Children Research Collaborative. Her current dissertation research focuses on how young Garofuna children tell stories that illustrate practice of care, love, and relationship. Welcome, Nena.
Thank you, Ale. I am extremely honored and excited to be here for this conversation. There's so many thoughts that I already have around this chapter, and so I'm looking forward to our panelists, and I welcome you all to the discussion around how social emotional learning, testing, regulations, restrict teachers, teacher agency, and make it difficult for educators to focus on children who are smart, who are brilliant and capable. And so today, in this conversation, we have two also brilliant panelists. Dr. Katerina Katie Payne is an Associate Professor of Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Texas at Austin. She received her BA in American Studies with a concentration in History and Political Science from Yale University, an MA in Urban Elementary Education from Adelphi University, and a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. She taught in early childhood public school classrooms in New York City, where I see we have some people from, where she developed her practices as a democratic teacher and strong commitment to urban education. Her research considers the intersections of civic education, elementary, early childhood schooling, and teacher education, and examines the role of relationships, of community, of justice in transforming classrooms in child-centered democratic and absolutely more equitable spaces. Her work has appeared in a range of spots and places, multiple practitioner-oriented spaces, which include Young Children, Social Studies in the Young Learner, and Bang Street occasional papers. So Dr. Katie will be one of our panelists today, and our second panelist is Pauline Dow, who is the Vice President of the Holdsworth Center, which is headquartered in Austin, Texas. The Holdsworth Center offers leadership development to school district leaders like superintendents, principals, and their teams who have selected to participate through a very generous multi-year investment. Pauline began her career in her hometown of El Paso as a bilingual teacher and district leader. Much of her research, training, and methodology were born and nurtured during a three-year W.K. Kellogg Foundation National Leadership Fellowship. In this program, she was able to travel to more than a dozen countries to explore new interdisciplinary pathways and develop a broader knowledge and experience base and challenge her perspectives on pressing issues of national and international concern. She holds a bachelor's and master's degrees in history and education and a doctoral degree from the University of Texas at El Paso. So I welcome Pauline and Katie in this discussion and looking forward to your thoughts. And for those of you who are joining us, just so you understand kind of the flow, we were thinking that we would have some remarks from Katie and then from Pauline, and then we'd hear what you were thinking and have kind of a discussion around some of your questions and with my questions to see what was coming up for you as you read this chapter. So feel free to share any questions in the chat as you hear them talking, as you hear all of us talking. If there's things that resonate with you, feel free to share. We want to kind of have an engaging, ongoing conversation in this Zoom world that we are all living. But again, it's all about how we're understanding young children and pushing back on some of these limitations that teachers are experiencing in their classrooms, and we want to hear what you think. So we will start with Katie, just reflections on, as you read this chapter, Chapter Five, what resonated, what stood out to you, what were you wondering about? And then we'll hear from Pauline. So all yours, Katie.
Great. Thank you so much, Nena. And first, thank you, Alejandra Barasa, and also Katie and Caroline at Highscope for hosting us today. And thank you to Nena and Pauline for engaging this conversation. And of course, great thanks to Jennifer Kizadair and Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki Colgrove, who have gifted us this text to really think on together. And so you heard in my introduction, my experiences are really rooted in the having been an early childhood educator who worked in New York City public schools and also in the research that I've had the opportunity to do in preschool through grade five classrooms, as well as I've worked in with novice teachers from preschool all the way through high school. So I sort of have seen the gamut of different school systems, both here, I'm here in Texas at UT Austin, but also kind of all over the country as well. So I want to just start with, for me, the premise that schools, especially public schools, hold a civic mission. So schools are the place where young children are oftentimes, it's the first place that they encounter people outside of their immediate families and their immediate communities. So in my fields, which are social studies, education, and civic education, we always argue then that that's really what makes schools so right for civic education, right? Because civic education comes down to the question of examining, how do we live together? So that's sort of the heart of what I was thinking about as I read the chapter. So when I, the whole book, Jennifer Kizadair and Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki Colgrove really helped us think about that question. But then what they add to it for me is how that can look very different depending on whom the school is serving. So they help us see how experiences we give to young children are too often dependent on systems that people in power did not build to serve communities of colors, interests, and needs, but rather systems based in whiteness. And so as I read through the book again, specifically focusing on Chapter Five, Complication and Politics, I kept coming back to that question in civic education, how do we live together? And so I was really thinking about, and I was thinking about it with everyone that would be here today, for us to consider, how do our school and classroom structures communicate to young children? And what do they tell them about who they are, about each other, about the society that we currently live in? And perhaps more importantly, how do we, how do our practices, how do our school spaces create room for children to engage their democratic imaginations to think about the possibilities of a more equitable and just society? So I know that's a lot to put on a four-year-old. I'm not asking them to solve the world's problems, but I do think we can give a lot more space for them to open up the questions that we oftentimes forget to wonder about. In this chapter, of course, like many, I was really struck by all of the constraints. Efficiency, individualism, systems of accountability, the emphasis on compliance and obedience to adult-driven rules, overly focusing on managing children's bodies rather than managing learning opportunities for children. And Aderen Colgrove helped us see through specific moments for Ms. Bailey and the children how these impact their learning opportunities. And so I want to just offer a few of the connections I made as I was thinking about this, particularly focused on testing and the social emotional curricula. So for testing first, probably like many of you, I deeply empathize with Ms. Bailey in this chapter. So when I began teaching in Long Island City, Queens, at a Title I public school, the majority of my students came from, many of them had immigrated from countries from all over Central and South America, Eastern Europe, South and Southeast Asia. And I also had a number of African-American students. And the school's leadership really focused on scripted curricula and testing as markers of achievement. So this was the early 2000s, like standardized testing was like it is today, but there was a lot of fervor around it. And like Ms. Bailey, I had to give those one-on-one assessments in literacy and in math. It just took a lot of time. And then my second year of teaching, I had this opportunity to do an action research project. So I did it on how in the world can I implement something like writing workshop, which I was really passionate about, in a high-stakes testing environment? And when I read those pieces from Ms. Bailey about her attempts to fit in a testing culture with her project-based learning, I just had these flashbacks to all my memories of trying to figure out, how can I let my students write their stories about the laundromat or their sleepovers with their cousins while they're also navigating the administration's requests for like specific writing samples to be turned in, perfect first-grade students, perfect writing samples every single month? And so doing that project helped me really learn the value of my students' capabilities and their voices and their experiences, and the role that they could play in shaping curricula. But I also wondered how tricky it was to do that work in isolation. And like Ms. Bailey, how hard it is to center children's agency when as a teacher I often felt like I had so little agency. I also was thinking about testing when I was reflecting on a project that I got to do with colleagues Jim Hoffman and Sam DeJulio with fourth-grade students. So I know many are more used to four-year-olds than fourth graders, but particularly in Texas and I think sure in many other states, testing just ramps up as you go further and further in the elementary curricula. And we had this opportunity to do a big project-based learning with, I think it was four fourth-grade classrooms, all of our student teachers at this elementary school in the spring, which is like testing season. So we took it up, and there's some things I learned there that really still resonate and that I thought about as I was reading about Ms. Bailey and the testing. So first, since this was a big project that then allowed students to develop their own inquiries, very similar to how we saw the students in Ms. Bailey's class developing their projects throughout the year, we knew we had to just bring in tons of books, right? So we found out whatever was starting to do their research on, we brought in just like a flood of books. And our student teachers were like, hold up, I don't know about the reading level of some of these books. And I'll never forget when Jim Hoffman turned to them and he said, "Well, when they have a need, they'll find a way to make sense of what they need to understand." And that could be on their own, that could be by asking for help. They'll find a way to make sense of it. It's about giving them the opportunity and the access to the materials. And it reminded me of Mary and the volcano, who we come back to time and again in the book. But it also made my heart hurt for Ms. Bailey and her students when we read about them on testing day, when they're trying to draw on all their capabilities to support each other, and they can't do it. And the second thing from that project that I sort of remembered was, at the end, I was talking with a fourth-grade, one of the teachers, Ms. O'Reilly, and she was marveling at one of the students who had done their research on what it takes to be a storyteller. And they had collected these pages and pages of stories from their classmates and written just, I mean, it was just this big manila envelope full of stories. And she reflects to us, and this is a direct quote from her, she said, "It was really nice to step back and be like, oh, I don't need to worry about you so much," the student. He was really successful, and he wrote these ridiculous stories that were very intricate. He has this vivid imagination and this very poetic language that was like, slap on a wrist to me to be like, oh, you got so caught up in he's so far behind. I have to work so hard. It was a rude awakening to just stop. He's awesome, and you need to celebrate that more." So I was really thinking about that as I read that section. And the other place that I wanted to just offer some comments was particularly around the social curriculum. So later in my time in New York, I switched schools. I went to a school on the Upper West Side in Manhattan, and I worked in general education and in inclusion education classrooms there. And that school really focused on pretty progressive pedagogy, steeped in beliefs about children's capabilities, their inherent worth and brilliance, and rather than enacting any sort of singular scripted, one-size-fits-all curriculum. And this was particularly true when it came time to the social curriculum. So the school, and it was a public school, we had petitioned the state to have our lunchtime be considered instructional time precisely because it's what we knew supported the social curriculum, right? You're sitting around, you're sharing some food, you're sharing stories. And so similar to Ms. Bailey, we took every opportunity that we had to communicate, both in lots of different ways. So I want to be really conscious of when I'm saying, talk, that talk is a lot of different things. So particularly in an inclusion classroom, I had a number of students using different sorts of boards to communicate with everybody. So we had morning meetings that were more about sharing stories than the calendar. Not that I love a good calendar time, but it was really about like, let's get to know each other and develop our relationships. And we also had opportunities to have things like problem-solving meetings. And so I'll never forget, my first year, this little boy, Daniel, came up to me at the end of lunchtime, and he was like, Katie, I need to have a conversation. And that was, have a conversation was our language for, I need to have a problem-solving meeting. And so I was like, all right, are you ready? Are you ready to talk to everybody about it? He's like, yes. And so he presented the problem to the whole class and said, like, look, here's the deal. I'm the sweeper this week, and I did not get to do problem of the day. And he loved doing problem of the day. It was like a challenging math problem that, you know, just, it was not required. It was just sort of fun. They liked doing it, so they did. And he's like, I didn't get to do it because there's so much food on the floor. And so then everybody engaged. They all jumped in with like, okay, like, how can we fix this? Like, what should we be doing? Do we need more sweepers? And we all, after they sort of talked, and you know, my role as the teacher was just sort of everything and then maybe poking a hole in a theory, like, we need to like not bring messy food. I'm like, look, I'm not telling your parents what to pack in your lunches. I can't tell the cafeteria what to do. Like, we're not doing that. Then we started, they came to the decision, if it's bigger than a carrot, pick it up. So you need to check your chair, and if it's bigger than a carrot, pick it up, so that everybody then could have time. So to me, it was these kinds of everyday interactions and relationships that are rife with opportunities to really develop children's civicness, right? Their ability to learn, to live together. And so then this really was quite a bit of the focus. I had the opportunity to do research with, led by Jennifer Kizadair and alongside Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki Colgrove, Molly McManus, Sun Min Lee, Anna Faulkner, and Shupi Satchdiva at a Head Start Center in South Texas. And we found that when given the opportunity, children will act on behalf of their communities, right? Many of you are like, yes, of course. But that's not always, we don't always see that, right? And that's really what Aderen Colgrove showed us throughout this book. And so like Ms. Bailey and her students, children in the Head Start Center we were at really engaged in social emotional learning in authentic ways, right? They attended to the idea of civicness in a way that social emotional learning became about a collective endeavor centered on relationships and interactions rather than on individual discreet social skills, right? So these classrooms presented opportunities for students to try on these skills through play, through materials, through the space in the classroom and outdoor areas, right? Because we learn to be social by being social, by negotiating different community members' needs, by learning whose expertise to turn to when you need something, right? Like particularly in a pre-k classroom, those people that can open the milk cartons, got to know who they are, particularly at lunchtime, caring for each other, having disagreements, figuring out how to solve problems. And I want to emphasize that, you know, I did say try on skills and practice them, but for young children, these aren't rehearsals, right? It's not like they're rehearsing for adult life, but these are very real and much, very much part of their current life as young civic members, right? The problems that they're solving, the things they're negotiating, what they're figuring out. They're learning with each other how to be in community. And so in that study, we gathered hundreds of examples of how children sort of embody civicness in these everyday ways. And I want to just share one quick one that really taught the teachers quite a bit. So I got to work with Shupi Satchdiva alongside Ms. Luce and Ms. Luisa and their 18, 3, 4, and 5-year-olds across the year. And they had set up centers, right, all through the classroom, and they had signs on the center, and they had put pieces of Velcro, five pieces of Velcro per center sign. And when a child then made their plan for center, they then went with their name on the Velcro, and that was that. But at times, the center was like full, particularly blocks and dramatic play, that got full real fast. And so children would wait for it to be open, or then you would hear later in the year, you would hear someone call out like, hey, like Luis, blocks is open! And then a kid would go across to go to it. But even more, as the year went on, one of the things we noticed was that the children would take their name tags and squish them onto one piece of Velcro, right? So they started to regulate how many people really could be in blocks at the same time? How many people really could be in dramatic play? And the teachers never stepped in to correct it. They didn't change any of the practices. And by the end of the year, when we were talking to them, they were like, yeah, I don't think we need that. Like, I think next year, we're not going to use the signs, right? So they started to see how children learned to manage opportunities of center time without their adult-imposed system. And it's not to say that we shouldn't create systems for children and help with the ease of the classroom, but it is to say we should be open to what they can teach us about what they need as a community. So these relationships and interactions alongside the ones we heard from Ms. Bailey's really support children's development of civicness in authentic ways. And our job as adults is to define them and to create the spaces for them to flourish and happen. But it's not to take away, I think, one of the things that resonates, of course, with this chapter are the constraints and the pressures on Ms. Bailey. They're very real, right? They occupy the minds of many of us. And they oftentimes occupy our minds so much so that we lose sight of the very children in front of us. And so like Ms. O'Reilly, we have to stop and see the storyteller rather than the test result. And of course, some of these problems are beyond our immediate control, right? They require advocacy and policy changes. And I think just some of the final takeaways in the questions that I sort of had was thinking about support. So what are our networks of support to do the work that we know can support agency, right? So who can we connect with on our campuses? Who can we connect with in our school districts, right? You're all here today. Who can you connect with here that can continue to create these supports? Because doing this work in isolation is, I mean, it's not good personally. It makes it my charter. It's always helpful as teachers to have those communities. School leaders make a huge difference. At CLO, we saw how the school leader supported teachers to be, to create agentic spaces in the classroom and throughout the school, in the hallways, in the outdoor spaces. So when leadership is on board, that can be a huge change on a campus. And then thinking about how interconnected teacher agency and children's agency are, that we have to really center teachers' professionalism and think about, for me, as someone who works at a university and prepares teachers, I'm constantly thinking about how am I preparing them to learn with and from children as much as I want them to learn. I teach social studies, like how to do historical thinking and work with primary sources, right? But what are we doing to really get people to just see children? And then the final thing that I walked away from, and that I always walk away from whenever I get to visit with Ms. Bailey in these pages, is just returning to curiosity, right? So many of us decided to go into early childhood or working alongside students because we found them so interesting, right? And they're so curious. So children are constantly making sense of the world and are asking, how do we live together all the time? And so we just have to make the time and the space, like Ms. Bailey, to get curious alongside them. So those were, those were my thoughts.
Yeah. There's so much that sits within, like, it was invigorating from listening to of like just how communication happens, even just watching you, Katie, and how story came from you and the passion that you have is just illuminating how story lives in us. Well, stories live in our bodies, in young children's bodies, in teachers' bodies, and that is the brilliance they're trying to communicate constantly, whether that be by voice, by hand, by, you know, like however they're communicating, it's how do we listen? How do we sit and listen? And so there's so much about, which we will, you know, get into in the discussion section around communication, around how community helps support like solving issues, how young children have brilliance and can offer insight into structures in the classroom, whether it be about centers, whether it be about eating, whether it be about conversation, the way that young children are offering, constantly offering, and teachers are constantly offering, and how are we harmonizing, balancing these restrictions and limitations that are placed on our classrooms with how are we listening to young children? How do we merge those needs? Because it's certainly a need to listen to young children. And the segue, the beautiful segue about advocacy and policy changes and leaders and wider leaders of our school districts, which is a beautiful segue to Pauline, because that's a lot of the work that you do. So we want to hear a little bit about you too, and what resonated with you in this chapter, with what Katie was saying around how schools are feeling limitations, teachers are feeling limitations, children then are feeling these limitations, and how do we actually listen in order to see who's in the community that can help us as we move out of those limitations? So I will pass it on to you, Pauline, to hear your thoughts too.
All right. Thank you, Nena. And I cannot think of a more wonderful way to spend an hour of my day. And it's going to be the highlight, I think, of my week for sure. So good afternoon, everyone. Just delighted to be here to participate on this panel with Dr. Payne and Nena Odom. Both of you already energizing, I think, this space in pretty dynamic ways. And also really grateful to be joining with all of you from wherever you are joining. And I'm noticing in the chat, you're from everywhere, so just really fortunate to be here. Like Katie, I wanted to begin by first expressing gratitude to Dr. Barasa and the team at Highscope for bringing, you know, the roundtable to this audience. And I also want to express deep appreciation to Jen Adair and Dr. Colgrove for what they've co-created and brought to the field through the publication of this book. And, you know, for me, it's a story of intense joy, maybe not fully sort of articulated in the book because that joy lives inside each of the educators, you know, that are working with kids. But there is intense joy and satisfaction when teachers can feel and see the experience and evidence of young students that they're blossoming as thinkers and as problem solvers and that they're enriching their families, right? That they're able to contribute to school communities through their learning and through their exploration. It's also a stark reminder, which is really the premise of the book, that, you know, there's this undeniable tension that exists in our public schools, especially, you know, in schools that exist in economically marginalized communities. And so as a second-grade teacher at heart, a bilingual teacher, teaching in students' primary language, Espanol, in my case, I can see myself in so many of her stories, Ms. Bailey's stories. And I can see not only myself, but many of my colleagues in those stories. And when I think back to those early years as a second-grade teacher in, you know, San Elizario, Texas, I can still remember feeling, you know, that sense of confusion and dejection. You know, when I got there on Monday morning and I handed back writing assignments that I had graded over the weekend, and, you know, most of my second graders received a low score with the opportunity to revise and resubmit their first drafts. And I had to give them a grade for that writing draft because as teachers in that district, we were required to document a certain number of grades each week, right? In each subject. And I knew it was a bad idea to give a grade for like a piece of writing that was in draft form. And I also knew that every one of my students could learn and be great writers. And I wanted to set like that really high expectation and work with them to develop their skills and their capabilities. So, you know, I hand out the papers, and instead of my students showing excitement and anticipation of their, you know, time that they were going to have with me during a one-on-one conference to understand like what they needed to improve and why, there were these feelings also of dejection, of embarrassment, and upset, right? And if I'm being honest, I should have anticipated this, right? I really wanted to be that teacher that could bring out the very best in children without sort of raising my voice, without puffing up their self-esteem, without bribing them with goal stars. with gold stars and pizza parties, you know? I I didn't want to do that. And in those early years as an elementary teacher, given the tension um of having to navigate what Doc, what Ms. Bailey describes, or what what the story that Ms. Bailey, um, the story we see in the book. I doubted whether I had the ability to be that teacher. And and I know many of my colleagues shared this sort of same sentiment, right? But as I continued my studies, you know, I came to realize that you know, like most of us do, one, nobody's born with the expertise that they need to be successful with young children and and young adults. All of us had to work hard to acquire our expertise over time. And the second thing is that, as Ms. Bailey's story shows us, offering those agentic learning practices invariably is going to lead to tension between teachers and colleagues in our schools and the leaders um, that supervises. And so what I experienced and what I believe Jen and Kyomi are documenting in their book is that leadership plays a critical role in influencing uh and either supporting or not supporting the ways in which teachers connect to children's real lives. And, you know, as educators working in this space of early childhood, a teacher's context and the freedom that he or she has to foster this sort of sense of belonging, um efficacy by offering children what Jen and Kyomi label as like the sophisticated, dynamic and agentic learning experiences, that's going to be enhanced or hindered by the actions of the leaders, you know, around her. Um, that teacher that is attempting to to do that. So this uh, I think, you know, piece that the authors are, that Jen and Kyomi are raising up is like, it plays out in how Ms. Bailey has to be, you know, forced to make political decisions about what she's going to offer young kids in her classroom. Testing, benchmark testing, test prep, more touch test prep, the formulaic, one-size-fits-all classroom management. I mean, there's that part in the chapter, chapter five, when, you know, after the students bust the sound protocols um allowed in the school. Uh, instructional coach comes in and hands Ms. Bailey five cards and says, you know, you need to like use these, use these steps here to to get your kids um back on track. Uh, that is a, that is a incredibly upsetting moment of disrespect uh to Ms. Bailey, to that teacher, um and certainly disrespectful to the students uh and the brilliance that those students bring. I mean, I think in this context, um also the example of the girls experimenting, you know, with building a volcano on the playground, like that's really a poignant example, I think, of a way that Ms. Bailey acted that allowed those girls to test and learn. And and this behavior, those actions influenced how the girls viewed their intellectual effort, right? Like what it meant to s- sort of have some choice and some option and to like guide that thinking and that learning. So two thoughts that I want to raise um from my own experience, again, that really connected and resonated with me um and Ms. Bailey's story. And the first one I call the workaround, you know, after having spent lots of years in public ed and as a teacher and in different districts, um working with different leaders. We often, my fellow teachers and I, uh had to take matters into our own hands in respectful ways uh to figure the workaround, right? We we call it the workaround. And so what that meant is that we would take the choices that were in our control as teachers to maximize the time that we could offer um agentic learning experiences to our students. And so one example is instead of celebrating, um, you know, holidays that you typically do in schools, um, be it, you know, whatever, whatever holiday it is, um with cupcakes and whatever. We would, we would maximize that time by making that into an author's tea. Every holiday was an author's tea. Two, two to three students would, you know, bring their published book, their work that goes into the classroom library, and they would present highlights from their published work. And they would take questions from the audience like real authors do. And that event was planned from beginning to end, including ushers at the door to invite parents who were coming in to, you know, be the the audience for this author's tea, to the food that was going to be uh presented and how families would contribute to that. This entire community uh sort of organizing around something that is meaningful to students. Um, where they had an opportunity to self-select and go through the entire writing process in very authentic ways. And so we were celebrating a holiday, we were supposed to do that. We did it in a way uh that would allow us to offer these opportunities to to students. Think the um other thing that we would do is, you know, we would leverage teacher solidarity. And so we, as a group of second grade teachers uh and kindergarten teachers decided to do it too, and then the pre-K teachers did it. Um, we basically focused in on something called language experience approach. Some of you may know of this strategy, but essentially uh it starts with some sort of active thing, like maybe you're making huevos con chorizo. Uh, eggs and um sausage with kids in your classroom that day. Uh, and that becomes the sort of exciting, sort of teachable piece that you raise up. Um, and you're able to connect some way somehow to the standards in the curriculum. Uh, and so language experience approach just, you know, flowed throughout our building because it allowed teachers to use their expertise to actually meet the standards. Uh, but then also offer agentic um experiences. And then I think the second point that I'll raise up is engaging parents, you know, in 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 the process. I've, I've always, from the beginning of my career, been very interested in the um sort of the policy implications of dual language education, multilingual education. And one of the challenges, without getting too deep into the nuances here, but one of the challenges is, is when you have a dual language education program, you have native Spanish speakers or native speakers of a language other than English. And then you have native English speakers, and in a two-way program, they're together in the same classroom. Um, if you're not careful in the balance of those two groups of kids, because affluent parents who are English monolingual uh families, they see the benefit of this. Sometimes you can have more of those students in a particular classroom. Um, that then squeezes out the students that um this program is really designed to support, um which is your English learners. And so engaging parents in advocacy around this to ensure that the, the ratio is balanced uh is really important. My timer. Um, and so I, and I think the last thing I'll say about inviting parents um and caretakers to partner with students um to write family histories and to publish these histories. Um, there's a wonderful story about how we did this in El Paso um with families basically leading the charge to take these family history, we would call them um cuentos encantados, where we would actually go into the neighborhoods. Families would invite us uh to their home and invite others from, uh other families from the classroom to come into the home and, you know, open up their photo albums and open up the video that maybe they had uh to share about their histories and to really bring to life what families have to offer in community. Um, that not only helped students to feel very proud of who they are and where they come from, but also solidified for students and teachers, like the respect that we have for what families, um, parents and caretakers uh can bring to the educational process and to the classroom in general. So those are some thoughts uh from my own experience. Again, just uh very grateful to have this wonderful piece of work that Jen and um Kyomi have have gifted to us.
Yeah, yes, yes, Pauline, I agree. I'm so thankful to Jen and Kyomi, you know, like this is like our springboard. It's holding us all up and chapter five and and Ms. Bailey showing how to navigate these different controls. And that's what I was hearing talk about too, is the way that families are a part of 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 the control in school. How do we engage them in in deciding how we're going to use that control in the classroom? How do we listen to what stories they have um to tell in the classroom as well? How do we engage with, where are there some some openings for us to use the power that we do have in classrooms and schools and districts to achieve the goals that we want, that we have, while still acknowledging limitations, working around those limitations? Um, one question that comes up um for you, Pauline, as we think about, because we both, like you both talked about community and family. And I wonder about how leaders of schools, of school districts, how do we engage them to think about community and family in a way that includes children and teachers and parents too? Um, Katie, you talked a little about the saviorism that happens sometimes with um with with curriculum. And that assumes that classrooms do not have the brilliance, that you have to come in and somehow like impose brilliance or find the brilliance yourself. Um, and so I wonder, my question is, how do we think we can engage leaders um of school districts of of schools to engage families and and teachers as a part of their community as well, that it's not only the leader of like a superintendent or someone that has to decide, but it's communities that decide as well? So have you seen, how have you seen that happening? Do you have, like, how are you thinking about that as well?
Mm-hmm. I guess what I would say is that I think it actually starts with the families and their opportunity to engage in safe spaces to develop their own leadership potential and skills in advocacy. Uh, because then they become the ones who are strongly asking that leaders in the school system make space for them to participate, right? And one of the ways that we did this in one, one system that I um worked in, uh worked in is through platicas, right? We would start with these, what we call platicas in Espanol and Spanish are just like talks. Um, and so we started with, you know, just lots of moms and tias and grandmothers that would come in and, you know, basically have a a conversation to create some empathy uh with each other, right? Telling just very brief stories as we started any meeting of any kind. We would always have this sort of empathy sweep. Uh, and that turned into a much deeper sort of preparation for these for our parents and the folks that were in there to participate, to actually go to the school board and and make a two-minute um sort of presentation at the open mic about something that they loved about their school system that they were supporting and advocating for. Um, and, you know, the next time they would come with a request of, you know, a change that they would like to see in the system. And so I think it's, if you, if it, if it comes there, if it comes from a a grassroots opportunity that families have to advocate, uh then there's more there's more sustainability, I think, in in that strategy over time.
Thank you, thank you too. And and Katie, I want to um definitely open up for your thoughts too. And um attendees, if you do have questions, feel free to write in the chat, because I will just ask all my questions. And that's, it's a conversation, it's a, it's a group conversation. But um Katie, I wanted to also offer some space if you wanted to respond to how we create community across um leadership roles in schools.
Um, well, thank you for that. And um I loved hearing um Pauline about the platicas that you had in the school district and and how that created space, because I know as a teacher, that was, I think, one of the biggest things. Uh, I remember the first school I was at, that was very restricted. The, the first time I had a publishing party, my principal was like, what is happening? There is a line of parents at the door. And I was like, yeah, yeah, you're, they're going to sign in, because right, this is New York City. There's a, there's an officer right at the front desk. And I was like, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll make sure to tell her next time, right? Um, you know, there's those ways that teachers that we can open up, but I love the the thought of like, how do we do this on a on a bigger scale? And, you know, there are some things that that I'm working on with colleagues, thinking about how to do that also in in teacher education, right? So how do we take community, how do communities help become part of our teacher education, right? How are they also the teacher educators, the people that we should be listening to? We're preparing teachers um to to go into communities and and they should have a role and a say and sort of how that happens. So that's some, another space um that I've been thinking about with how we can do that. Because I think it hopefully then also helps, you know, helps um teachers see, you know, how parents and families and caregivers can all be part of, they're part of what we're doing, right? Um, and I know um Kyomi, uh Dr. Colgrove is doing some other amazing work, really thinking about how to engage her students doing this kind of uh work. And so um I just wanted to offer a little bit about thinking with teacher ed, that it's also a space that we might want to work into.
Yeah, yeah, and and how teachers are becoming, like how they, how they want to become in in different communities, which goes to how we were talking about questioning self and how so often teachers are questioning self and questioning what they see, you know, i- if that's what they can rely on, is what they see in young children in the classroom? Or is it the pressure that they're feeling from schedules, from times? And and a lot of you, you both named how using the the schedule to kind of find what you need. So whether that be the lunchtime and that being the conversation and building in social emotional um strategies or practices that actually listen to conversation with young children. Um, or if that is about platicas, like like engaging community to come in when you need to get some response from a district or something. So you both named ways that teachers uphold their own practices while engaging like the the structures. And I wonder about when they are questioning themselves, which is very real in these current times and in education and the classrooms where you see the brilliance of young children and you want to respond. Also, like Ms. Bailey saw the brilliance in children she was working with and wants to respond and feeling that tension. And what do we do when we sit in that tension? Um, you named like reaching out to to other teachers and and finding ways that you can kind of lean together in that tension. But I wonder about how teachers are really handling that tension right now, because it's um it's strong and there's, you're being pulled in so many different directions. Um, so if you have examples or um just suggestions of things that have worked for you of sitting in that tension and feeling okay to sit in that tension. Um, we read about Ms. Bailey just feeling a lot of the um heartache of sitting in that tension and the joy of sitting in that tension. How do we support each other in sitting in that tension, I guess, would be the question to ask for you.
Well, I mean, that's the million dollar question and the probably the very biggest challenge, um the springboard for all of these conversations. I think for me, one of the, one of the things that I'm still very hopeful about is like the scholarship around some of these issues. I mean, there's quite a bit of evidence that shows, for example, in sort of parenting studies that parents who allow students' choice and autonomy in their early formative years actually do have much higher performance and efficacy over time, those students do. Where there isn't a lot of research and where I think, you know, we need some research. And so like the scholarship could really ramp up in this area is like what what that means for teachers who offer agentic um experiences. And so that's why research like this is so critical, because I do think it's Um, experiences. And so that's why research like this is so critical, because I do think it's. It, it's um important to be able to point to studies. And examples that have been, you know, tested and that have been corroborated. Uh, to be able to make a case for why it's important to. To go down a certain, like to to have a certain strategy, right? Why these agentic opportunities are important, why it's important for kids to learn to think. And to solve problems uh on their own in order to, you know, all of the things that we know are true. So more research. Uh, to be able to. Give us the tools that we need to make a case. I think the other thing that, and there was a question in the. Chat a little bit about this is like, you know, what are some ways that teachers can advocate for themselves, right, for their own agency? And I do think solidarity helps. Do you think that when you have a critical mass of teachers who, you know, are. Thinking strategically about how to communicate of a challenge and offer some solutions. You know, I I'm I'm still hopeful that there's a place for that, especially if you're in a building or in a school system. With a progressive leader and a leader who is open to, and you take advantage of that time that you have with that leader. Uh, even if that time is fleeting and figure out how to build the roots of that into the system so that that can sustain over time. I know that's, you know, a, not an easy thing to do, but I have seen examples of where. You know, even in very marginalized communities, uh, schools have been turned around as a result of a teacher. Uh, working with other teachers with a leader who. You know, cares um to figure out how to sustain something, even if leadership changes. Uh, and policies uh restrict.
I've noticed too, um, how teachers are talking to each other. And even what, if it's not around change, but it's around current experiences, so that you're not feeling alone. Um, because uh in relation to the question that you're talking about, Pauline, um, that we saw in the Q and A around. These current types of COVID and just how can we impact change as educators? Um, and and one way I've seen teachers doing that lately and just educators as a whole is is sharing stories with each other. Because that is our power in so many ways, like finding other people who are going and 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 Katie, you talked a little bit about about this too. It's like our power is in story and 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 sharing experiences so that we don't feel alone and that we know that there's other people who. Can also be part of that solidarity and finding a way out of that. Um, is is one way that I've seen teachers kind of recognizing their power while also sitting in the the heartache. That is being caused by current circumstances too. So I want to open it up to um Katie, if you had other thoughts. Um, around that question around how in these current times can educators, leaders of schools. Reach out, um, speak out about or change any of the current conditions.
I mean, that's a heavy question. Um, probably if I had the answer, I'd, you know, be uh. Changing everything. Um, but I think that, you know, you all have named so many possibilities, I think. You know, as we've all talked about here, being able to find community with other people, whether it's in your building or elsewhere. So I know that. Um, you know, I had a few colleagues at the the first school I worked at where, you know, we're. All sort of trying to think about how to do things a little differently. Um, but it was a very large school and not everyone thought that. And I had to seek out other spaces and places. And so that's, I mean, that's how I ended up. Getting so excited about writing workshop as I, you know, I was in New York City, this is back when writing workshop was not yet everywhere. And so I got involved in the Teachers College Writing uh Project. And then. Um, you know, so, and then now as an educator, I oftentimes try to connect my my students to different places. So here in Austin, we have a group called Educators in Solidarity. And so they come together and they they talk about policy issues that are affecting classrooms. So I think trying to seek out those spaces, and I know, um, like, I mean, if you're in the Bay Area, Fremepore Corcid, who's an educator. Uh, scholar activist there, she off, she talks about and lists actually in some of her writings, like different spaces and places. So I know there's a lot of. Even, you know, national spaces, um, the Free Minds Through People, there's just so many different places you can go to to start connecting with people that that. And this being one of them that uh that have that like-mindedness um to create that support. And then also to be able to come together really in solidarity and activism, right? Like, how can we? What are the things, you know, I I have led a scan for what happens, what's happening in Texas, like what sorts of bills are coming out, what sorts of things? Which is a lot, right? And so I take that on as a university person. That's a lot to ask someone who is managing. Eighteen to twenty-eight uh young children during the day. Um. And so to see where can you get those snippets of information to to feel like you're staying on top of it. I think the other thing, I really loved Pauline's um talk about the workaround. And so to think about what, where are all the different spaces of workaround, right? Whether that's in. Looking at the standards and where does this face such as or, right, where you can sort of. Uh, for a social studies person, challenge, uh, who's being represented in the curriculum? Where are there spaces? Like, I I worked with a fifth grade teacher who, you know, test prep was real and she just rewrote all the. She just did her, she redid, she would take, here's the test prep, what they've given me. Here's an actual piece of literature my students are reading, and here's the questions that I can now line up. And they're reading a real piece of literature, right? Not some, not something that they didn't know or a real piece of nonfiction. So I think there's some, some ways um and and to do that with people, so that you're not doing it alone.
Mm-hmm. I think that's, oh, yes, that's. That is a, that is a very good example of how teachers can turn this around. And so like another word that I'll mention there, like, I think it's also in the framing. Because often in solidarity, in advocacy, if we're. Only focused on what we are against, I think that's when we. Meet resistance. I think that if we can more focus on what we're for. Then you open with like this frame of optimism. And, you know, I do think that you can then garner support and grow alliances that allow you to to have an impact. Yeah, there was one other point I was going to make and I, it's fleeting now, but uh. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Uh, that, and that is a beautiful place to leave it at, like, what are we dreaming for? What are we dreaming about, rather than what are we resisting constantly? Because it allows us to sit in the imagination of what can be, which I think is how young children live. Like these alternate nows, they are constantly wanting to express despite you trying to impose something else. You know, like they're constantly wanting to communicate something to you. Um, and so that is a beautiful spot to kind of leave that. What are we dreaming for? What are we working for and towards? Um, as we think about agency with young children, as we think about how systems sometimes impose. Um, limitations that we, you know, can move out of or work around, to use your words, Pauline. Um, and so, but we can dream, we can continue to dream, and what are we working for? So thank you all for that. Thank you for the conversation. Thank you for the thinking and beguerration. Um, for all of you that enjoyed that are joining us um as well, um, I will pass it back to Ale. Um, to share our like last minute pieces um as we close out our discussion today.
Well, thank you so very much to uh Dr. Pauline Dow, Dr. Katie Payne, thank you so much for that incredible conversation and uh future Dr. Nena Odom. Thank you so much for moderating this conversation. It was wonderful. We appreciate it. Um, we want to remind everyone, um, we want to make sure that you know that you will be receiving. A certificate of attendance will be emailed to you uh twenty-four hours after we complete our roundtable. We will also be posting this recording of this incredible conversation so that you can also share it with your colleagues. It will be on the highscope.org in our playground. It will be available as well. We also want to remind you that you can continue to purchase this book, Segregation by Experience. And I know there was a question from an administrator, and I was a former administrator, about what could you do in the classroom? You could also do a book read with your teachers about this book. It's a wonderful opportunity. We've done it before. Uh, we want to also remind everyone that at this moment, we are excited to uh to announce we have our segregation by experience. Our sixth roundtable will be February sixteenth at the same time. So please make sure to register for our next roundtable. We are also uh asking for call for proposals. It has been now open for the two thousand and twenty-two. Highscope International Conference, which we are excited to celebrate our fiftieth anniversary of the international conference. It will be a hybrid conference from May eleventh through the thirteenth in Detroit, in Detroit, the Marriott uh at the Renaissance Center. And please explore more about our international con- conference on highscope.org. Um, Highscope is a nonprofit organization. Please, we encourage you to donate and invest in elevating the early childhood education and the outcomes of our children. We are extremely excited also that this year is our sixtieth anniversary of our monumental Highschool Perry Preschool Study. So, as always, uh donate and invest in our, in our earliest learners. We want to thank you very much on behalf of Highscope. It was an honor to have our panelists today. Was an honor to host all of you from all over the world, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.